Attorney JFC, ask through the process, and what other process to go through, let me go through. But the main question was, and as I mentioned before, I did meet with the attorney's attorney in the NUC. And the topic to do was, and I didn't actually do it, but I did go through the NUC with you guys before. So the main question is, from the Piers, the idea that 99.9 point line, I'll pass it in Suffolk, aren't that? The question is, how the board looks at it? If I should go for it, for the first time, or if you just grab it? I'm not too proud of this, I mean, I have plans.
Well, my honest opinion is I'm torn, okay? And the reason I'm torn is because I understand that you have a taxable piece of property that you'd like to build on, and I get that. On the flip side is, you know, do we change the look and feel of all the houses in that area with something now on Piers? And we're also not sure of where, like I said, where that lies with the river and everything else that comes through. So, I mean, you know, that's why I'm, just to be very honest with you, I'm a little torn.
I want to get back from everybody else before they get tired. You don't say anything, or?
As I mentioned before, it's not a protest here. It's a human law, but that collapse.
Right, but that was actually built though before, before we had, I mean, well, before the last major flood, you know?
I'm actually, I'm good. But it's a different way.
Right, I mean, you just said 99.9, right, so, that's...
That's right, that's exactly what it is.
Exactly, exactly.
Would you approve, or would you say no, because it's on Piers? I guess, you know, for the board's sake, the question is, assuming the county came back and said they had no objection, and that certain mitigation measures could take place, I guess what the applicant is asking is, even with all that, would you say, no, we don't want a house on Piers? Right, I mean, is that really what you're asking?
Exactly.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
If you want to proceed, you should. You should feel like you, and you would get a fair hearing, I'm sure, but I will say, since the flooding, after Hurricane, what was it, Irene?
Sandy.
Was it Irene?
Was Irene?
I feel like a lot of residents are very sensitive about it, so there's a lot of...
That's not what we want to do up here, it's going to damage it from the front of flood.
But building in a floodplain, I think, there's sensitivity, but you shouldn't let... that's not a no, we can't say no, we have to go through the process.
I really consider the neighbors, because it will be a nice house, and I'm not asking that any setbacks. And it will be a nice house, it will have the physical, it won't, the street will make it nice, and now, I can't say, I don't want to say it's not nice, but it's a nice house on the property, that's going to be a nice street.
Are you knocking down the house that's there, or this is on an empty?
I feel comfortable with the neighbors, they'll be happy. But as I mentioned before, they're a concept, on the tour, I just want to be a little bit there.
Well, I guess, yeah, but I mean, it's hard to, you know, this isn't a vote, he's
just kind of trying to get a feel, I mean...
Yes, exactly. I don't want to, I'm not here to, I'm also, I wasn't there, just by money, maybe I don't need to go over the barriers.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's a dangerous precedent, the sudden flood, I mean, I guess, the barriers, where does it stop, where does it end, in terms of what people want to do with the amount of property that will be available to be built on? I think that's really the question.
She doesn't care. Please, I don't.
You have to talk into the mic. I would be less inclined to go for a project that changes variances and builds things in floodplains in general, so if you're asking me what I'd do for this, I don't think I would.
And potentially more water runoff into the river, to, for people to deal with down river. Once again, I'm not an expert in that, but, I mean, I know that people are sensitive to that. Can you guys, can you hear, or no? Not really, no?
The mics are on then, so sir, if you want to go to the podium, you can go to the podium. I don't know if it's necessary. Did you want to say anything, or Dan, or anybody else?
What's the verdict?
There is no verdict, there's no vote.
Right. And I just want to say, the book by the agencies, everyone will be happy, and the neighbors will be happy, and the water will flow, and the water will be pulled back.
Robert, the question is, is there more runoff now?
More runoff?
Because, because it's not, it's no longer...
Of course.
I guess we're getting a report from the company.
I think what the board is saying is, the ball's in your court. You've, you've kind of been here twice, I don't know how much, you know, nobody's really saying anything, so.
Did you want to go over his...
There's a note here. I've actually got a copy for you of what's required, just different approvals.
You should have for your information.
Yeah. Did you put it in the meeting?
Yeah.
I just got that this afternoon, but that should really, that's a new one, that's from our floodplain manager. That's not from the building department, you have the one from building.
It's a full calculation, to be able to, if it would go good, and shouldn't be causing too much lack of all ground, this thing could be worked out, it's a calculation, so whatever, it will work, it's going to happen.
But without a plan, they can't really...
So the look, and the concept is the thing that, it is what it is, like that can change, so that if I have to make it on the ground, and be able to flow, it won't work. And as I said, there is a ready, something like that in the area, I know it's supposed to form, but...
We really need a plan. I mean, it doesn't look like a bad house, but we really need a plan and approvals.
You didn't have a, you didn't have a plan?
No, a formal application.
A formal application and the plan.
And review.
On the Piers and everything else.
I think it goes back to what I said before, you know, I put, the board has spoken, if you will, I don't know if you were able to pick up on it, but I think you've got as much of a commitment or non-commitment as you're going to get.
I got it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, informal discussion on Danina's at 1 Lafayette Avenue, Mr. Ellsworth?
He was very, really, here or...
Oh, yeah, it's over there now that the mic's working, thank you.
Evening, Richard Ellsworth for Zuniga Inc., better known as Danina's Restaurant. Rudy Zuniga is here with me tonight, just for your edification. I am here because my client was approached by the village, and his outdoor dining permit was revoked, I don't know that there was actually a permit, but he was told that by date certain, he had to stop his outdoor dining. The building department threw, I believe the outgoing building inspector indicated that he could not approve the outdoor dining without us appearing before this board. My research is a little unsure as to which direction we should be going, and I appreciate Mr. Magrino's discussion, although brief yesterday, probably should have had a longer one with you, Bob, about this. But I'm seeing a CB district that permits restaurants, that does not distinguish between indoor or outdoor, does not prohibit outdoor specifically in your code, and I have a client who never used outdoor dining until COVID came along, because it seemed like a good idea to him, after the village approached its restaurateurs, to give them that opportunity. So now he wants to continue it, it's a good idea, he's got, his customers, some want to be outside, some want to want to be inside. And the question remains, how do we do that? Do we need a site plan amendment? Do we need any type of permits, special permits? I don't believe so, I don't see anything in the code. Do I need any particular waivers with respect to his property? There are two, two pieces of property we're dealing with, one owned by him and one rented by him. The one rented by him was the former parking lot next to his building. Do I need, would this board be looking at some sort of easement or reciprocal easement agreement between the parties, to allow that to be one piece of property for the purposes of the plan? So this is, this is the reason I wanted to come tonight, not, not to waste this board's time and tell you I didn't know what I was talking about, I don't always, but I certainly think this is a little unique situation for the village, and like the discussion to be had with you.
Okay. Well, yeah, I did discuss with Mr. Ellsworth yesterday briefly, the appearance here today, this is a kind of an informal, so I'm calling an application. I mean, there's a couple things, then, you know, really, the way I see it, two avenues. One is if you, you would need to come in, in my opinion, for an amended site plan, so that you could show the building, and what used to be parking, and address those issues, because now there's no parking, and also address whatever structures might be in that adjacent lot. You know, so that would be kind of coming in fresh and asking permission, so to speak, saying, hey, you know, this is what we want to do. If, you know, the building inspector's made a determination that, you know, whatever permission was given as part of COVID by the village board is no longer allowed, you know, if you disagree with that determination, you have other avenues that you can pursue, so that's kind of a second avenue.
Well, I appreciate that, I certainly could appeal that, but I don't believe it's a formal decision, and I don't even know if it was a formal permit that was issued to my client, given the circumstances and given COVID, but I do appreciate where you're saying it with respect to appealing that, and that is, that is quite frankly, a possibility, particularly given the fact that I don't know that I need site plan approval here. The expansion of the existing business is such that would be less than your code requires for additional parking, for additional site plan, so there are questions there, and I'm not asking you to tell me which way to go, Bob.
Aren't you taking some, some parking out by having that there?
Pardon me?
Aren't you taking some parking out by having it in the parking lot?
That parking was never required under its original, the restaurant's been there since the 70s, that parking was an accommodation for Mr. Zuniga's patrons, and the village never required that as a condition to operation. So I think, I think I've got my answer without getting much response from you, and I'm not...
Well, I, you know, look, the alternative, you can apply for a building permit for that structure, and, you know, then the building inspector will either refer you for site plan, or say you don't need it.
Well, he already did, in a roundabout way, refers here, but I didn't want to put in application without coming to talk to you, I think, I think it was, I didn't want to jump down a rabbit hole too quick. So I appreciate that, I will, I'll consult with my client with respect to that. Again, on the record is my position that my client, and I'm not being argumentative, this is not a board to be argumentative before, but my position is my client has a right to outdoor dining presently, and if we need to tweak it to allow him to continue it, we will, but, but my advice to him has, has always been that he can continue until some event occurs. I appreciate your time.
Wait, somebody has a question.
I got a couple of questions, I read, I read through, I read through your letter, I read, and I took the time to actually take a look at the, at the property, and I just had a bunch of questions. You were saying that they're two separate parcels, correct?
Yes.
Right, so, one parcel is designated as a parking lot, correct?
No, I don't, and I don't know that, that I would even be able to answer that. Designated as a parking lot is, it's an empty lot.
Well, like I said, so my question would be, and we'd have to look into it, is there a change of use there, if it was, if it was a parking lot since the 70s, now, now pushed into an outdoor dining with a privacy fence and everything else? It's just a question I'm throwing out there.
It's a valid question, and that might be one of the reasons I need to come back here, as opposed to seeking just a building permit from the, from the...
Got it, I mean, you know, when we look at certain, when we look at certain places that people are looking to do things, obviously, when there's a change of use from one to another, it usually comes through the board here. So that's the reason why I was asking if, you know, Mr. Magrino, I don't know, I don't know what, if that is a, if that's an issue or a non-issue, but was there, I mean, right now, it's being used, so is, are there health department inspections on that, on that outside piece?
There's been fire inspections, health inspections, building inspections.
There's currently, like the, like the health department actually inspected the outside area, whatever else.
I'll ask my client, but I believe they've been there, inside and out.
Inside, out.
Right.
Okay. SLA permits, because there's alcohol being served, so is...
Yeah, those are, those are covered under the present, present license.
Okay.
It's not an act, there's no extra outdoor facility to serve, so they wouldn't need that.
I do believe that the SLA does, if there's going to be outdoor dining, I believe that they have to at least be notified, an application made or whatever else, if you could just forward that to us, that would be great, just so we take a look.
Assuming we're coming back, I'll give you everything you need, I promise you that.
There's also seating for like 100 people outside, so there's approximately 50 under the tent and 50 to the, to the, to the left of the tent, if you're looking at it. So once again, we do have, I know that the parking lot was not required for the actual building and for the actual restaurant, I know that that parking lot is not required, as you had said, and I agree with you, but the question is, if, if there's potential for 100 more patrons showing up, where is the parking for that? So that, that's just a question I'm throwing out there, I don't need an answer or whatever else, I'm just telling you my thoughts.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad to address it, generally speaking, certainly my client has that concern, and has contacted other property owners, but your code also covers that in numerous ways with respect to the CB district and restaurants, so we would be looking for those different ways for this board to handle that.
Right, so, once again, that would be, that would be an issue that we would definitely want to address.
Sure.
But right now, the, there's, there's outside dining, and I think that, listen, outside dining is a wonderful option. You actually have here, it's a, it started off as a tent that is now attached to the building, there's a wood, full, a full wood structure in the back, that's actually, you know, completed with gutters and everything else, there's storage of propane tanks on the outside, but you're saying that the fire inspector has been there, and he's okay with the propane tanks?
All inspections have been completed, in fact, the only thing that was changed was, they went to electric heat outside, right?
Electric, that's inside, and we don't use all the propane.
You don't use the propane anymore?
No, we don't, it's inside.
Because, I'm sorry?
We can, we can not use any side of the tent.
Under the tent, they, they're using electric.
Okay. And, and the structure actually has windows and doors and everything else. I'm not opposed to it, but I can't believe that, like, there's no permitting at all that's required for it, so...
Well, but there, there has been continual inspections, particularly during COVID, when all these structures were, were erected, and the village approved those throughout, throughout the use.
Perfect, I'll go check with the building department, I was not aware of that.
Okay, I'd be happy, I mean, there's no, we're not hiding anything.
I'm, I'm not saying you are, by any stretch, I just want to make sure that, you know, if that structure comes down on, you know, 14 people dining in there, we want to make sure that, you know, we could say it was inspected, everything was...
Right, and Mr. Dale, when you give those approvals, and when you approve a site plan, we can't do anything without the building inspectors, just like any other applicant coming before you, it's, it's that other department that would make sure that those structures are safe.
Unfortunately, there are cases where things are built and, and it doesn't, and it's not inspected until after the fact, you know, when things are pointed out to people or whatever else. I can tell you that, that happens, that's the reason why we have code enforcement and everything else.
That's right, and that's why I'd be relying on your building department to do the right thing.
Perfect, okay, perfect, excellent, thank you.
Anybody else?
I assume that all of the central business, is, the central business district businesses that have outdoor dining are getting a similar notice.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry. It says here that you were notified because the, the outdoor dining program has expired, so I assume that other businesses are also getting the notice that their outdoor dining is, is not allowed as well.
I think you heard me say this was a little unique, and I guess I didn't explain that, there's not many restaurants in the village that have private area for dining. The, the outdoor dining primarily, and if you look at your own website, was primarily designed for sidewalks, and where people could not, restaurants were not allowed to serve, and, and the village was kind enough to allow those restaurants, outdoor dining to survive. As I indicated earlier, our client was approached for an outdoor dining, but on private property, which he, which he accepted that invitation, and then realized, after coming to me, that he's had a regard, at least in my belief, he has a right to continue that, he's not going on private, excuse me, public property.
I see the distinction now.
Okay, thanks. So I'll, I'll leave it, that we'll certainly be in touch and keep in close contact with the village and its offices in relation to this, and probably be back before you in the near future.
Right, thank you.
And just, and I think you understand and acknowledge it, as of now, the building department's position is it's not permitted.
I have not been told that, I've been told that the permit was revoked, I don't know that we've received anything that prevents it.
It says, has expired, therefore the operation of outdoor dining must be discontinued.
Okay.
Do you need anything more clear?
I can address that with, I can address that with the building department, though, I hope, Rob.
All right, I just want to make sure it was clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, informal discussion, La Chocolate, 1 Ramapo Avenue. Good evening, everybody, Ira Emanuel, Emanuel Law PC, I'm the attorney for the applicant La Chocolate. I have with me Avi Weinstein, who is the project engineer, and Shomo, and I don't remember your last name, I'm sorry, Shomo Walkin, who is the project architect, and Mr. Rottenberg, who is the owner and the applicant here. This is the, the chocolate factory that currently exists opposite the train station over, over, over here. Currently, it operates fairly well, it is a structure that is kind of unique in the way of its operations, in the way of its design. It actually takes access from both Ramapo Avenue, which is the road that goes in front of the train station, but also from Chestnut Street through the Ballfields. The property has an easement that was given to it by the village of Suffolk back in, I think, 1960, that allows the use of that roadway down to the Ballfields, and there's a big apron, if you recall, and it allows for access underneath. And the chocolate factory has been operating like that for a number of years, business has been good, and they would like to expand. Part of that expansion includes the reacquisition of a, the lot that's at the corner of Ramapo Avenue and, and Park Place, which actually, up until about 2010, was part of this property, and was just subdivided out back then. So he's reacquired that, he wants to incorporate that into the site, he would like to expand his building to, just about double it to about 76,000 square feet, add another story to it, and add structured parking. So you should have the plans in front of you, we can walk through them, it's probably easiest to understand it if we go from the Ballfield side of things, and if we look at the existing structure, the existing structure has the...
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Ira, I'm sorry, all this paper is going into the mics, and it's not going to get picked up on the recording. So if you can just lay it out, so you can...
Which page are you on, Ira?
Uh, well, I'm not sure exactly what sheet number this is in the set, but I'm working out this drawing.
What's it say on the bottom?
Just write them out.
No?
Yeah.
It says existing site plan, existing site plan.
This is what you have on your... 41?
Yeah, yeah. So this is the way that these standards are... How far back is this really going? It's going to be involved with snack.
So what, what we're dealing with, if you're looking, and you have to look at it from one side and then the other in order to understand the plan, it is, it is a little on the complicated side, okay? On the Ballfield side, which is the north side, you have existing loading berths, which service the, the, basically the end product of the factory, of the chocolate factory. The factory is arranged vertically, so that is, basically have a gravity feed from the top down, and so at the bottom, you have the, the, the distributing, the packaging and distribution, and they're loading berths, and that is where the trucks can come, and what eventually will be simply to take package, to take the packaged material out. Right now, everything comes in and out there, because that's their only loading berth. Above that, there, there is a manufacturing floor with offices as well, okay? That will then become purely a manufacturing floor under the proposal, and then above that, there will be a new third floor, partial third floor, not full, partial third floor, that will be office space for the, for the business. On the south side, okay, there will be, on what is now grass vacant land, there will be a new parking structure. The parking structure is intended to also be three stories, so the bottom level will be equal to the level of the Ballfield, and we would hope to be able to take access from the Ballfield, basically around the west side of the building, and into that lower level. The grade level will be at grade level, and that would be the main entrance for the parking structure, and then there will be an upper level that would be at the level of the second, of the second floor of the, excuse me, of the third floor, rather, of the, the building, and that will be where intake will be for raw materials that would then go into the chocolates that are being made.
So that's a second floor from grade, is what you're saying?
Correct, second floor from grade, that's correct.
Followed.
That's correct. There are a couple of issues that we have to deal with here, okay, from, from a legal perspective. The first is with, with respect to that bottom level of the parking garage, there's two points of access, one is from Ramapo Avenue ramp down, the other that's proposed is from the Ballfield, okay? That makes a whole lot of sense, the problem is that there is no legal right for this applicant to get from the Ballfield around the building. And so if the village is accepting of this, we would hope to be able to acquire an easement to allow that to happen. If the village does not want to have, give the easement, well, then that particular access is not going to happen, we think that this would make for a better circulation, it's a discussion that we would be having with the village board, once these plans progress a little bit further. The second thing that, that's a little bit of an issue, in addition to expanding the manufacturing space and the office space, we took a look at the, at the area, and it's literally across the street from the, from the railroad station, and if you look at that area, there is no place for anybody to get a cup of coffee, to get a bagel, to get a pastry, to get anything, okay, in the morning. And we thought it would be a nice amenity if we could provide a cafe, a small cafe, you know, maybe 1,000 feet to 1,500 square feet, in the lower, in the grade level, okay? This is in an M district, retail like that is not permitted in an M district, and so that's a discussion, another discussion that we would have to have with the village board, if it seems like a good idea to this planning board. If it doesn't seem like a good idea, then we won't go forward with it. But that's part of why we're having, we wanted to have this informal discussion, because we have, A, a relatively complicated site plan, B, this issue with the access coming from the Ballfield, and C, the issue with the cafe.
I have a question, you, your drawings that you provided us was very detailed on the building, it never showed the effect on the Ballfield, and how many of the Ballfields would be lost?
None.
With that second...
Zero.
For the second road?
Zero.
Where's the road going to go?
The road would go, the road would go hard against...
Why don't you show us on a drawing?
Sure.
No, 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 on, on a formal drawing, what would be left in the Ballfield? No, 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 on a formal drawing, what would be left in the ball field under your plan?
Yeah.
Because you gave us, the building itself is very detailed, but the road doesn't go farther than a couple of feet, you talked about moving the field house.
Right.
I don't know where you've moved the field house, because there's no room to do it.
We do have a location for that, sir. It's shown on the plan.
It'd be nice to see the plan.
Well, it is, sir, it is shown on the plan, but we will make it more permanent.
Okay, thank you.
And you don't own the land that's in the box, that's village land?
I'm sorry?
It's a variance for, sorry, you don't own the land, or the, the business owner doesn't own the land that's facing the ball fields at the lower level, right?
That's correct.
That's village land, but there's a variance to load and unload.
There's an easement.
An easement, too.
There's an easement, he has a property right to use that, to use that area.
For loading and unloading, or for anything?
For access, yes.
So that has become, that has become a parking lot, and there's cars there permanently?
No, no, no.
There are, there are cars there permanently.
Well, it may be that it's become a parking lot, but that's, that's not the intent.
It's a parking lot for his vehicles, so there's no access to anyone but him, so if someone were to go to a ballgame and they wanted to park there, they wouldn't be able to, because his cars are there permanently, and I don't know, I don't know, is that allowed under the easement?
I'd have to, I'd have to check the easement and see what is permitted.
Because I know that when, when he bought the property, it was a vacuum factory or something before, parking was a big point of discussion, and that was part of it, because we were worried that they would start to use that lower ball field lot, which was used by the residents previously, and they were supposed to use the parking above, or buy additional parking, that doesn't seem to have happened, it seemed like it's just sort of a free-for-all for the land.
We'll check into that.
I think it would be good to, because it seems like parking is going to be a big part of this project, if you're talking about different uses and a larger building.
Well, one of the reasons why we're, why we're proposing the structured parking, three levels of structured parking, is to accommodate all of the vehicle needs that he has, but there is also a proposal, as we've mentioned in the narrative, that on the days when the factory is not operating, particularly on the weekends, we may be able to enter into an agreement with the village to allow for use during, during ballgames or other activities, and that's something that we would be open to.
He's, he's been in before with a similar plan to this, I think there was some, wasn't there something with the zoning of the residence, like, there were two zoning issues, like, where the house is, that wasn't zoned for a parking structure, and it faces residences, and then also, it's a mercantile, or what is it, manufacturing area, so that was, like, retail wasn't allowed there essentially.
Right.
So there, it seems like there were two zoning issues, is that, is that correct? My memory is not what it used to be, so...
Yeah, I believe the entire site is zoned M, that's my understanding.
And then where the house is, that must be residential.
Including where the house is, yes.
It is, it is measured. Oh, it is, okay, so it's manufacturing where the house is?
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and as far as the parking is concerned, this would be accessory parking for the, for the use, so clearly parking would be allowed for it. Okay? Any other questions?
I'm just trying to see, so, so the road you're proposing is not going down to where the snack bar is, it's before?
Well, actually, actually, the proposal is to relocate the snack bar to, frankly, somewhere higher ground, and provide a, and provide a new snack bar, and to basically go through where the snack bar currently is.
There's no room for a snack bar unless you give it to one of the fields.
We do, we do have it on one of the drawings.
That's why you have to show us before and after pictures of what's going to be there after you've eliminated that, and where the snack bar is, I think it's in the middle of the outfield.
You got it, all right, yeah, would you, all right. Mr. Walken has, Mr. Walken has it.
So, you can have that whole place?
So, our site plan, which is on 1-1, currently the concession stand is down here, we want to propose to place it here.
What is, what is there now?
Right now it's empty, there is nothing there.
I can't believe that, that's why you have to give us another picture, because there's not a lot of room down here.
Isn't there a big slope there, a steep hill there?
I think, I think the problem is it doesn't show the existing, where the existing snack bar is, it's just so relocated.
If you could show us before and after, and you're going, so include the ball field here before, and then after.
That concession stand floods on a regular basis, and so we would want to, we would be agreeable to moving it to a place where...
Right, but it doesn't show it on the plan.
So those are just for loading and unloading?
And this is the other road or something?
Well, it is.
It says right there.
Right there.
The snack bar is right here.
It's not on this sheet.
So, Mr. Emanuel, where would you be relocating the snack bar to?
Oh, he has it here.
Shomo, you want to show them?
He's saying where that really steep slope is, put it somewhere.
It isn't, it can't work, it's just...
So, right now, the concession stand is right here, and his property is there, so he has the easement for access to loading berths, there's currently, there's a head there.
Mr. Emanuel, you would like to take that concession stand?
Everybody's own problems.
Well, I just...
Yeah.
I think there's a turn there.
I think it's the structure.
I don't know if it's going to be, I don't know, because there's, there's the block everywhere.
Mr. Emanuel?
Yes?
How many loading docks are there now?
Oh, no, I'm in a...
Not, not from the, not on the proposal, but that existing?
Yeah, there are, there are three.
And none of the three that are there now would be any of the nine that will be there in the future?
Uh, no, we're adding six, correct? We're going to be using, we're going to be using the existing three?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the three, three of those seven are there now?
Three of the ones that are on, on, yes, that face the ball field, yes.
And then the other one is proposed to come out onto that side street?
Well, not the side street, they'd be, they'd be coming up onto the, at the top of the parking structure.
That's a little volunteer, if you're going to...
You're talking about coming out of the side? So, okay.
Yeah.
So you said two guys on this side?
And that, these trucks go out this way, these trucks go out?
Are there any variances for the density of the new building that would be required?
No, I don't believe so.
It's as of... Well, the plan should identify the variances, it shows that there's, that there's variances required or existing conditions, but it doesn't identify that, that was going to be one of my comments, you might want to, you're going to have to look at that at the bulk table, because...
We're going to have to, we're going to have, yes, these are conceptual plans.
And you're going to have to return a lot of stuff.
These are conceptual plans, we've, you know, we want it to get a feel, we want it to get a feel from the board, you know, is this something that, you know, that you're interested in, is it, because as you might expect, even developing these plans took a lot of effort and a lot of expense, so if this was DOA, you know, then we would, then we would know, if it's, if it's not, if there's exploration here that's worthwhile, we can come in and we can try to, try to put more detail into these plans.
I remember this applicant came in during COVID when we were all on Zoom, and there were a lot of questions, and these plans have answered some of them, but...
Okay.
The answers don't seem to be very good, it's like moving the snack bar and creating a road along one, on the western edge, and, I don't know.
If you're taught, if you're taught...
And then the more intensive use of that parking area, and then also trying to put a use in that's not allowed, I don't, there was concern, let me say that, it's clear now what the plan is, because it was just renderings before, and I think my comment was, it's a nice, it's a nice proposal for the central business district, but I don't think here.
If I could just, and just, I'll just throw it out there, it's showing 47 spaces required, I guess, based on your calculations, parking space, but you're providing 128, I guess why, why would there be three times, or almost three times the amount of spaces? Just something for you to, like, why the whole parking structure?
Shomo, you want to come over here?
So, the reason why we are actually providing more parking spaces?
Can you talk into the mic, because we're not picking them up?
All right, so, the reason why we actually provide more parking spaces than required is that we want to give back to, to the use of the town, we don't want to just use everything that's required, we could just do a one-story parking deck and we'll be fine, but we want to give parking for people, for commuters, for commuters who are using the train, or for the ball field, people who are coming to play ball in the ball field, so it's, we want to give and take, we want to be able to give to the town so that they can allow us to be able to go forward with what we need.
Especially on Sundays, they can, they can use, the residents, they can get free parking, now it's a mess, I mean, there's no way you can pull out and not...
That's my next question, is, does the factory shut down Friday at sundown, and is it closed Saturday?
Yes.
Okay.
What about Sunday, Sunday do you guys operate?
Sunday is not, has a more, and Friday, I hope, it's a...
It just, you're building an entire parking structure just to give the village extra spaces, that seems like, like, you know, if it were 10 extra spaces or 20, this is like 80.
They, they need the grade level, they need the upper level, okay, they need the upper level so that they can get trucks up to the top there, okay? It's not that big a deal to dig a little further down, put some pylons in there, and get a lower level.
That's really not true, though, any kind of structure like that is a huge expense.
It's, it's...
And you are right next door to the village parking lot, commuter lot.
Yeah.
I'm going to look against the village, it's a part that if the village, if you're selling to whatever, make some revenue, it'll work out.
I'm just concerned about the, it's a residential street, and you're putting a big parking garage on it, I don't know, it's worrisome, it's worrisome.
Well, again, and we're aware, and we're aware of that, and that's the reason why there's no entrance or exit on that residential street. Parking structures can be built so that, A, they're attractive on the exterior, and B, so that the noise from the parking structures can be blocked, okay? You don't have to have all open decks, for example, those decks can be screened, they can be blocked off, and we'd certainly work with the board, or if there's an architectural review board, we can work with them, to make sure that this is an attractive thing. It's also not that high, we're talking about, you know, one level above grade, so it's not as if we're talking about, you know, a five or six-story structure there, we're talking about a structure that's in keeping height-wise with the surrounding area.
I, I just, when we spoke via Zoom, I thought that it was a very interesting proposal, I really did. Maybe other people don't, maybe other people will feel differently, but I actually think that, you know, the village needs as much parking as we possibly can get. I also think that, you know, even though the building doesn't look horrific, I mean, when I look at the designs of this, it obviously looks absolutely beautiful, in my opinion. I love the fact that, you know, they're, that they want to put a little retail cafe right across, I think that that's, that's out-of-the-box thinking, I know that right now it's not permitted, but, I mean, if, if we're going to talk freely, let's talk freely, right? I think that's a very, a very interesting idea. My issue really, more so, is the amount of trucks that would be coming in and out with nine bays. I think that, that would, I understand that the business needs to operate, and you have trucks coming in right now, but I think on nine bays, you'd have a lot of, a lot more trucks in that area, and I think that it would, there would be a lot of people in that area that really would not be thrilled. Now, I know that if you're going to put the parking structure in, you could put stuff up that people really wouldn't see it from where they are, and stuff like that in a residential neighborhood, my house was right across the street, I would probably, I probably wouldn't be thrilled about this, you know? I can say that I like it, because I'm across the street from it, right, so I'm not living right next to it. I do think that this is a very interesting idea, I think that it should be, it probably will need to be discussed further, I think that there's definitely room for, for something to happen there, I mean, I would love to see, I would love to see, you know, a portion of what, what you guys are looking to bring to the table, and once again, I'm only one person here, but like I said, nine bays, that kind of sends up like, not just red flags, but like flares, you know, and, and I'm just speaking honestly. I know that if I lived in that neighborhood and I knew that that many trucks would be coming through, I'd be, I wouldn't be thrilled, but like I said...
We'll have to get to an operational narrative.
What's that?
We'll have to get to an operational narrative.
Okay, like I said, I do like the fact that they're looking to do something with this building, and I, and I think that, like I said, parking is always a big issue, I...
It's a city that works, it's waiting six months to get through, it's called the station, you know?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's people that want to get, permit parking in the red section, waiting for them.
Yeah.
Listen, you know what, I mean, there is parking down in the lot, in the commuter lot down there, but it's, it's a decent walk, and a lot of times people don't want to walk it, I mean, obviously, that's a lot, that's a lot more convenient and stuff like that. It's also convenient for some people to be able to come into the village that might not live in the village and maybe spend some money in the village, you know?
If you're coming from going to that house.
Yeah.
What I can tell you is that, as one person on the board, I'm definitely open to discuss and hear, you know, different things, like I said, the trucks, the amount of trucks, the amount of bays definitely concern me, and also the surrounding neighborhood, you know, I mean, that's, that's my major concern, you know, what, what, I haven't heard from anybody in that neighborhood, I'm sure that we will, if...
Oh, absolutely.
You know, but that's, I just wanted to give you some feedback.
Our architect just advised me that the reason there are nine bays is because your code requires nine bays for a building of this size.
I'm sorry, it's because?
Apparently, your code requires nine bays for a building of this size, so if we can get relief from that, we can probably reduce the number of bays, but again, that's part of the operational narrative that we're looking at.
The code requires nine bays? Why would it require nine bays? I don't...
You know what, because, because it's usually based upon a ratio, based on square footage...
So you have to have bays, whether you want them or not, that doesn't make sense.
This is what I, I've just been told, I have not independently verified it, okay, but what I will tell you, okay, and I know this for a fact, is that most of these codes, including this one, okay, were written decades ago, okay? The parking ratios no longer make any sense, okay? As a matter of fact, I'm a member of the Board of the Rockland Municipal Planning Federation, and we are just starting a process where we're reviewing codes in Rockland County to see if we can provide communities with better parking ratios that are based upon current needs, rather than the needs from the 1970s. So it would not surprise me if the number of parking, loading berths that are required for loading of this size is excessive for the actual needs that we have. If that is in fact the case, then we will be happy to reduce the number of bays, assuming that we can get the relief that's needed.
Well, I'm assuming that the building, obviously, with it becoming bigger, right, you're going to be more, expecting more production, and the whole nine yards, how many bays do you need?
There's a lot, today's day, you've got, let's say, you've got to buy a lot of materials and get everything you have.
Sir, can you, can you talk to the, please, just so we can catch you? Thank you.
Today's, today's day, if you want to order something, they require, let's say, if you want to order some kind of chocolate, they want that we should order 80,000 pounds. The warehouse is not, can accommodate that, but the same thing, the plan is, let's say, I'm just going to tell you, there's a, there's a rice cake, small rice cake facility to come, I mean, to build, I mean, it's not basically, it's just like poppers, and to make it with chocolate, the pilots that makes the rice cake, they want 40,000 pounds to be ordered, just from California. It's not so much work as, it's, it's warehousing, and...
No, I, I understand, what I'm saying is, do you, you have three bays right now?
You're saying you're putting in all these bays because the code requires it, so I would ask, one, if you could tell me where that is and we'll find it, two, do you need them all, is the question?
Up, up there, I don't need them, and I think, I'm not sure that we were planning to also build an elevator from the ball field, up there, a commercial elevator to take up stuff, if a tractor trailer comes, because we want, we don't want tractor trailers to go up there, because it's just for regular box trucks, 40-foot, 16-foot, maybe 24-foot, but that's, that's max, but not really. Chocolate is, it's an expensive thing, and a box truck of chocolate is worth 20,000... Because we want, we don't want tractor trailers to go up there. This is just for regular box trucks, 14-foot, 16-foot, maybe 24-foot, but that's, that's max. But not really. Chocolate is an expensive thing, and a backstock of chocolate is worth 20,000 or 30,000 bucks. It's enough to deliver.
It worries me that you're proposing an increased utilization of village property, and you're already, it's already not being allowed, the village is not being allowed to utilize the property currently, and now you're proposing additional use of it. So that's a bit of worry, that's a bit worrisome.
Now you're getting into legalities as to whose property it is.
It says it on the zoning, it says it on the plan. On the plan you submitted, it says it. On the plan you submitted, it says it's the village property.
To the extent we have an easement, we have a paramount right.
To use it as a parking lot?
And I would be happy to refer you, I would be happy to refer you to Mr. Magrino for an education as to what easement rights are. Okay? But to say that, to say that this is village property and that we don't have a right or that we're not...
No, no, I'm not saying you don't have a right. I'm saying you're increasing utilization of it.
We have a right to use that easement.
As a parking lot.
Okay? We have a right to use that easement.
I'd have to see the easement. I'm not sure what it says.
I'd have to see the easement as well, okay? And unfortunately, I was trying to...
So you haven't seen it, and yet you're saying you have the right. Okay.
We have a right to use...
We should all read it so we're all educated on it and not sort of condescending towards the board.
I said, I'm not going to debate this anymore with you, Mr. McInerney, because I don't have the document in front of me.
My name's not McInerney.
I'm sorry. That's what your nameplate is there.
Yeah, I must have it mixed up.
Okay. But in any event, I don't have the easement in front of me. Quite frankly, I try, I was...
But you just said Rob could educate me on it, so is that, you don't have it? You don't know what it says?
I don't have it.
I'm the one who needs an education on it? Okay, that's fine. No, I'm fine. I don't want to be argumentative about it. I'm just worried. And I, you're asking for my opinion, and I'm worried. That's my opinion.
Fine. I appreciate that.
So one, how many loading berths would you want to see would be more, sorry, would be more appropriate for you to see in a, on a building like this?
I don't think we know the answer to that.
Well, more like, how, what would you want us to do?
I mean, listen, if you had nine bays and only one's being used, I mean, that's a different scenario than nine bays and nine, nine, nine bays being used. If there are trucks pulled up to nine bays and pulling in and pulling out and everything, like that, that's different than having...
Would it be better if we, if we, five, like five or six bays? Four bays?
Yeah, I mean, I...
No, Mike, I mean, do you need the two up top?
So the idea of the, having the loading berths up top is that there is going to be function on the, on the second floor? So we want, we will want to bring up, but we only have two loading berths there. It's not, we're not going to bring a whole bunch.
I'm more concerned about the building that's housing the little league now. Who's building is that? Do we have the right to even?
That's the village's building, and that, that's in the, as Mr. Manuel said, in their ideal scenario, that the village board agrees to give them or expand their easement or give them another easement, and then they would, to use that section. And that, that's one thing, just in terms of two technical things I'll just throw out there for, you know, I guess the architect. Something that shows existing conditions a little better, what's existing and proposed, like it's kind of hard to tell what's there and what is proposed to be there and what's going to be removed. The vicinity map, I'd also recommend you do with Tax Lot instead of, you know, it's kind of like a Google map type thing. Those are, these are just a couple of technical things. The other question, subdivision. Are you going to subdivide? Do you want subdivision approval? Are you going to do that by deed or?
Well, we're going to, we're going to merge the lots together. So whether that can be done through a filing with the county clerk's office or whether it requires approval from this board, that's something I'll explore with you.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Different communities do it different ways. By the way, with respect to the quality of the drawings, not an excuse, but by way of explanation, Leonard Jackson Associates was in the, Leonard Jackson is retiring. The firm was in the process of breaking up when all of this was being done. We now have Mr. Weinstein here, Weinberg, I'm sorry, and so we'll be able to get more coherent drawings for you.
Okay, yeah, it was just a couple of, you know, technical things you might discuss offline, but I'd bring it up while they're here.
It's a shame they're retiring. They were my neighbors when I was growing up. Yeah, that's, wow, that's a long time.
Yeah. He's trained a lot of engineers.
Wow, what was I going to say? You need a lot of equipment like this.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'd kind of like to see where the ball fields lie right now compared to the drawings and stuff like that. I mean, that, that's definitely a huge importance. Now, you were saying that they did buy that house on the corner, right?
Yes, yes, they own it now.
Okay. That's the lot you were talking about potentially combining.
Correct.
Yeah, that might be helpful. Mr. Manuel also was an overall site map showing the proposed, it doesn't really show the proposed easement that you are discussing, or at least its impact on the ball field, you know?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Avi Weinberg from Weinberg Limb Engineering. Just wanted to say that we will request to get a full survey and give the full picture. And just also regarding the concession stand, I know that came up earlier, as this gentleman over here attested. Where it is right now, it floods constantly, and the plan is to move it to higher ground. So it's also win-win for everybody.
I'll add the opposite, just to make that clear.
Yeah, I'm not sure where to go. Is your next stop the village board to ask about some of these things or before you make a formal application?
I think our next stop is probably to come back here with a set of plans that is more understandable, that fills in some of these details. You know, there's no point in going to the village board and asking for permission because they're, they're going to say rightly, "Well, what does the planning board think about all of this?" So I think our next stop is perhaps come back another informal such as this with a more robust set of drawings, perhaps arranged more clearly, and I'll get together the, I was asked to put together an operational narratives that we have a better idea of what we actually need rather than what the, rather than what the zoning code is requiring of us in terms of loading berths.
Send me a copy of the easement?
And a copy of the easement. Yeah, I tried to get a copy today, but the county planning, county clerk's website was hacked at the end of last year, and it's still down.
Is it operational?
No, not yet. Not yet. It's, it's a real mess. Okay? Does anybody have any other questions?
I think it's intriguing, but there are definitely concerns that need to be addressed.
Fair enough. That's fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a bunch of students here. Do you want me to sign your, yeah, these guys are dying here.
Thank you. 80,000 pounds of chocolate. Do you know what that would do to my diabetes?
Any clue?
You'd get double credit.
Yeah.
We can all sign.
I can, I can time it for whatever time you want.
Who teaches?
Really?
Just say yes.
Are you in Callan Answell? Who's class you?
Anybody else?
Oh, Provenza, okay. Thank you, guys.
All right, next we have an informing, we have Karma Buildings at 65 Lafayette Avenue and 31 Park Avenue.
Yeah, hi. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, hi. Can everybody hear me? My name is Rahul Datharao. I'm the owner of Karma Buildings, along with my brother Amol. So as you know, we bought the building in 2017 December. It was a bakery, Crumbs Bakery before. And when we bought it, it was a food establishment with some, you know, they used to bake cookies and serve sandwiches and coffee. And there was some, you know, seating at the windows as well. So we felt it is a food establishment when we bought the building, and we thought that's like the use, you know, which is defined, like a restaurant use for the building. Upstairs, there were offices, 31 Park Avenue, the other entrance, and that's where I use it for my IT consulting business as well.
For what business, sir?
IT consulting. I'm a computer engineer. I work for IBM right now. My brother works for CHAB, but that's our office as well, which we, we are not using it, but that's like our office in a sense. But the 65 Lafayette Avenue, the entrance from the, I think Route 59, that Lafayette Avenue, that was the, where the bakery business was. And we've tried to obviously rent it to, you know, someone for some other purposes. The village has really not helped us in that sense to what business should really go in there. We have not been able to get a reasonable return on our investment. We bought the building with our, you know, savings over time. We went to the village building department and asked them what is the correct use, and I think Mr. Magrino also must have seen some of our applications for like an events kind of application where we could rent the space out for, you know, some events for parties or something, but that was not allowed by the building department. So right now I have an investor who wants to do a restaurant and a bar out there, and I, you know, would be also partnering with the person. The person's tax secretary is here. It's BNG Construction, but I would be also, you know, partnering with them. Again, this is not my field. I'm a IT person, computer professional, both of us, but we want to do something in the village. We've been here for 20, 20 years. My kids go to Suffolk, you know, all the schools, and now they're in colleges and Johns Hopkins and so on. It's all in the application, but we would like help, you know, guidance, because I'm very overwhelmed with the discussions. This is my first planning board meeting. I don't, I'm not prepared for this from the legal perspective or anything. So I would like some direction, whether I should invest my money and time, you know, going that bar and restaurant idea, whether there is, you know, any hope of getting that approved. So would need some direction on that.
And you're talking about the main floor and the basement as well?
Yes, yes. So the basement also has about eight and a half feet clearance, and we added a staircase so that it is usable. So the CEO was approved in 2020. So because of COVID, we had some delays, but we got our CEO for the building. But the use obviously wasn't approved because we didn't know what to do and...
Did the building inspector ask you to come here or?
Yeah, so Steve, I spoke to Steve and before that Joe as well, who was there, but there's a new person now there, so I haven't, I met him once, but I haven't conveyed my case. So we think it's a allowed use for a restaurant, I feel, because it was a bakery and it was food, serving food as a fast food, I think. And there was some outdoor seating as well, and also inside there was some seating for about 30, 40 years. I don't know when the bakery was formed, but the bakery has been there for a while, and we just bought the building as an investment for me and my brother. But we feel that it should be a restaurant, you know, some, some sort of a nice bar, restaurant, you know, which will go well with the neighborhood. It's a CB zone, so that's what we think, but...
Is this an allowed use in this building?
Yeah, I, well, I, I think the zone, it's in the CB district. Again, this, just to, I guess, address part of it. Even when you come in, we'd need a little better site plan. I know you kind of did it yourself. You might want to get an architect or an engineer or somebody.
Yeah, before I spent any money on it.
Yeah, no, understood, but they would know about, you know, district. I believe in the CB zone, restaurants are permitted. I'll confirm.
Yeah, it is, and it was fast food restaurant before, so I don't know the distinction between the two. What is the, you know, so it was a fast food restaurant, right?
Well, what it was before could matter, but if it's permitted in that zone, it's permitted in the zone.
Yeah. So I don't know why they said you have to go to planning board. We are not going to approve it without, you know, the planning board approving it first. So that's why we submitted it here.
No, but that just means it didn't...
Didn't that building get blown up in a TV show?
If it's in the zone, it was...
Yeah, it did. So I mean, you guys put it, you guys put it back together wonderfully.
No, they actually paid us to, so that is, and the taxes are huge. I'm paying 25,000 almost in taxes per year. So I'm spending for the last four years with no revenue. I really want to do something in the building, and it doesn't look good being empty there, right? I want to do some business, and the tenants I'm getting are not really able to pay the rent for that. I'm not getting reasonable, you know, return on the investment. So I feel this is a good idea, and I'm turning 50, so I would do something else versus just coding. I would like to run some business there.
So you, you would be, you would be then renting it out to somebody who would want to put a restaurant in?
No, no, I want to...
Oh, you want to put the restaurant in yourself?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
It was never really a restaurant, though. It wasn't, it was never tables or anything, and there was just a bakery.
It was a bakery for as long as I can remember.
I mean, they had, they had...
Right, okay. What's hap, what Joanne is pointing out is whatever existed with the bakery in terms of seating was not a permitted use. That was back in 2005. When, when was, how long was seating there? Was, did they recently have seating up until?
I mean, when I bought the building, it was there, so I actually have videos and everything.
We would have to look at the building department file to see if it was approved. But if it's in the CB zone, CB zone allows restaurants, so...
Yeah. And the photographs I submitted actually shows seating there for, for summer, I guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, it was an elbow bar.
Yeah, and inside also.
One or two arm stools. I don't think a lot of people use it. What this says is that they didn't get approval. They installed it and didn't get approval for it back in 2005.
Even in the literature, if you see the literature they had for the, when I bought the building, it says with outdoor seating. I mean, I thought it was seating, so...
They did, they did have a few tables and chairs outside.
Did you ever check on the, did we look at the building department file?
That's, this was in our file from when they were before us. I don't, I did not.
I'm reaching out to the owner.
So they may have gotten approval, or the building inspector may have approved it without sending it, or maybe he didn't get approval. I don't know. But even if that's 100% correct, a restaurant is permitted to go, right? I mean...
So if it's permitted, then it's a building code that they have to...
Yeah, no, right, the size and parking and...
Exit from the basement.
Right, right.
Parking is the issue. That's what Steve brought up.
Right, but in the CB district, you can get, the planning board can set it, and you could do a fee in lieu of parking spots, so...
Or even waive it. We've waived it. We can't do it. We're not waiving anymore.
But there's a, there's a provision that, because presumably this building really doesn't have enough parking, right, if any,
No, no parking.
That there's a procedure where the planning board can approve it, you know, waive it, but you would make a contribution to the parking fund, you know, to help with parking elsewhere.
Absolutely. Whatever the, but we would like some confidence that, you know what, we're going to spend all this time and, you know, effort and attorney fees and everything before I do that, right?
My concern, you wanted to put a pool hall downstairs?
That's like the, you know, accessory use maybe is permitted. I don't know if it's permitted.
Yeah, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if we allow pool halls. Like, I don't know if you can have...
No, it's not a pool hall, like a couple of tables just to entertainment-wise or...
I think there's a bigger issue with egress because you only have the one stairwell.
Two.
The way you have it shown on your thing shows that kitchen has access. People cannot, they have to go through your kitchen to access that back stairwell.
No, it's not like that, actually, but I can obviously show that.
It's misleading on your thing, so the way it looks now, it's one stairwell, in and out. And I'm concerned about capacity and how many people can be downstairs and upstairs, which has to be said.
It is misleading. It looks like the stair comes up underneath the kitchen, so it looks like it's coming out of the kitchen, but it's really below, it's not, it's not drawn very good.
Yeah, that staircase was always there. That wasn't touched. The new one was added towards the Lafayette Avenue.
The question is, if it came for site plan, what is everyone?
I mean, there are plenty of restaurants.
Assuming he comes with a site plan or building permit, I guess the question is what your preliminary take is on...
It looks like there's space.
Until we actually see what the access looks like right now.
Yeah, I would be more than happy to welcome everybody to come and visit the...
Oh, no, I've been to the building. I understand. That's not the point. I don't want to recommend you build a big restaurant that only holds a dozen people. I just remember it being very, very small when it was the bakery.
It is 1,700 square feet, almost.
Yeah, I mean, it was just tiny. I just...
How many square feet?
1,700.
Oh, 1,700.
But it's all opened out. It's like nothing. There is no, I mean, if you come inside, I'll show you. I can have videos or you guys can visit.
So then the kitchen and the ovens would be the bulk of that?
It will be a very small kitchen with small plates because we don't want to do a full...
No, no, I mean, but previously, when it was a bakery, because the retail part was very small.
They had a huge kitchen, huge ovens.
That's why.
I mean, they had, they had like walk-in freezers. It was, it was making food.
Big back house base.
Yeah, they were making so much food. I mean, I, I don't know how they were able to do that in that space.
I think you need to go to the building department, and is anybody, is anybody academically opposed or?
No, if it's, if it's allowed by the zoning, and then it's a building department issue, you just have to get them to...
I'm just concerned about the basement with, you know, the restaurant, I don't, you know, I think that that's...
That would be accessory use anyways. I mean, that would be, not be the part of the restaurant. It'll be like, you know, an additional space.
You might find that the building department makes you put in like a fire stair, a rated stair. stair for, to exit a basement, a second stair, but, but it's hard to tell in your plans.
No, we have two stairs there.
Okay, it's hard to tell, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, maybe that's because we didn't use a proper, we'll have to, you know...
I know, because the building code is very strict about egress for me.
Yes, and I understand.
So you would have to live up to it, but...
But as a restaurant in general, it will be permitted, right? That's the whole...
I don't think anybody's opposed. We can't approve anything tonight.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody's adamantly opposed to it. You've got to take the next step. If anybody else has any comments? I just had a question. The pool hall is in the basement?
The two pool tables. It's not a pool hall. We just wanted to put some entertainment, you know, just...
But the bar is upstairs.
Yeah, the bar will be upstairs.
It could be ping pong tables.
Ping pong. It could be anything like entertainment wise. It doesn't have to be that. We just found photographs of that, which in our mind looks no good.
All right, so, yeah, I mean, again, I think you've got the answer you're looking for. And, you know, again, we can't prove it now, but you've got to put in a formal application in the building department.
What, just one question. So, I mean, if this wasn't allowed, right, for some reason, what other uses would the village allow in that space?
Well, I think definitely offices would be allowed in that space.
But at the main level, that would be a wastage of that...
Oh, you're talking about downstairs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the main level, the street level, which is the prime property. It's like, you know, the best location, I would say, in the village, I would say, for any kind of establishment like that. I was thinking, you know, a fast food restaurant would be allowed if there's no seating. I know fast food doesn't have any parking requirements. So maybe, you know, like a franchisee or something, you know, which I could also have been set up. That was other thing, but I'm more interested in this one because that has the revenue potential. This one has a revenue potential, other ones don't have it.
Fast food in the village has not, hasn't really worked out in the past.
Fast food, they're going to drive through now. I mean, just a retail establishment, hopefully not haring now. That's just my personal opinion. We don't want to go there.
Yeah, and Mr. Magrino, if you remember, Steve had sent you my original application for event hall. That is not an allowed use. That's what he said, you have to go to the planning board.
We're not telling him not to put a restaurant there.
No, we're not telling him not to put that at all.
You're allowed to do that.
Do whatever you want.
You're allowed to do it. It's not illegal.
About what?
Put a restaurant in.
You're allowed to do a restaurant.
So we can't, so it could be event hall down, down there, right?
We would need to see plans on it. We need to see plans.
I think it's a building department issue. They would need, they could say...
They're referring, they're referring to you. They're saying, you know, we cannot give the permission. You have to go to the planning board. That's what they are asking me, and I've been like running in circles.
The planning board's telling you, you got to do formal plans in order to get an approval. It seems like the board would be amenable if the plans were...
Okay.
You know, clear and something that they can approve.
Okay, so we'll go ahead. So perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Joanne.
All right, informal discussion for 90 to Lafayette Avenue. Thank you for your patience, gentlemen.
Hi there, good evening.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
David Blau. I live on 79 Francis Place in Spring Valley, New York. I am the owner of 9296 Lafayette Heinz Playhouse for about, just a little bit more than a year. I bought it with a vision to enhance the building. There's been some vacancies there going on for many years already, and it's one of the symbolic buildings of the town. And I believe that everyone wants to see it, you know, doing what it can do. We currently have there the famous La Cata Insurance, and we recently have a attorney that moved in. I think he was even here tonight, maybe. I saw him on the schedule.
Your last time, yeah.
Yeah. He wants to put up a sign outside. The challenge that I've been having is the second floor and the third floor. We used to have there the comedy show, and then in COVID, when she closed down, she wasn't able to pay the rent, so she left. And then when she wanted to come back, she was willing to pay a very small amount that didn't make sense with the amount of expenses I have on the building. I've been on the market already for, since I bought it. It's over a year. And we've had multiple, multiple showings, but the challenge is that that second floor, I don't know how many of you have been there, but it's only like a half of the floor or not even half. It's just like, it's a gallery that takes around, the third floor takes around the second floor. So most of that second floor has a 22-foot ceiling. And which makes that the second floor and the third floor are both useless. The second floor is useless because nobody goes into office with a 20-foot ceiling. And the third floor is useless because it's like, just like a gallery, so I can't do anything with it. I've tried to attract, you know, certain venues that would be able to benefit from such a space, like similar to a comedy show or something entertainment industry. I guess it's the time that we're living in that it's just not attractive, and we didn't have any interest in that end. On the other hand, I'm already a year into this, and I'm really struggling to cover the building, and I'm, I want to, have to see some, you know, some, some movement. Our broker did have a lot of interest from office. We had some very nice companies. We had just recently an IT company that wanted to take their a couple thousand square feet. And we had some, a lot of local small offices that were looking out for it. You know, it's in a good location. So the idea that we came up is to take that second and half third floor and finish up that third floor, should be a full floor, and we'll do, you know, some nice executive offices, Class A for those both floors. It's definitely within the zoning. We had zone, we had offices there. It's a business zoning, commercial business. We had Mr. Garfinkel, which is highly respected architect here in Rockland, draw up a preliminary plan. I believe you all got it with a little bit of a write-out of what we want to do. So, and he also checked the original engineering plans where he saw that the business, the building is capable of, of getting that added on third floor. He might have to, have to put in, the engineer might have to put in one more beam going from the bottom, but overall, the building is very strong bones and it's capable to carry it. So before we went and, you know, filed that full engineering and architectural plans, we wanted, I spoke to the mayor one day about it, and he said, it sounds very interesting. He just pushed me into this date. He said, go put it down for them before you spend all that time and money. Obviously, this concept is going to come with an elevator because it's going to become like a full three, four, three-story commercial building and a full sprinkler system, you know, to meet the code.
Are you, when you talk about offices, are you considering a co-working space or individual kind of space?
So honestly, I don't think, I know that the previous owner was at one point thinking of co-working space. The thing is that I don't want to make it too small offices because I don't want to go into the challenge of parking. I know I do have a little parking lot in the back, but I don't have too much. So I would rather have more like bigger executive offices where you have like one executive and a secretary. If you see on the plans, we only put five offices on the second floor, five offices on the third floor. That's it. We want to keep it minimized. We don't want to have too much going on.
Are there any?
We also have a, I don't know, this is not really why I came, but I just figured I'll bring it along, but we do have a beautiful rendering of what we want the first, the outside to look like. It gives a nice, more of a business center.
Sure.
We have the specs for it. We actually did allow the work ready, the big windows are in already. We just have the facade and the lighting is something that we want to do and answer together with the whole concept. We, you know, professional business building. You know, with the insurance and the, we still have one vacancy over here, which is also a challenge because it's a very large space. And I don't know what I want to do with it because I still need to see what I'm going to do with the second floor and the third floor. If I'm going to want to be professional and I want to have like a restaurant and bar, you know, we had some interest in that regard. So I'm still, you know, the second floor and the third floor is a big challenge. I want to figure that out, and then I'll be able to, you know, better market that third floor.
Is there any, like, any zoning or use to things?
The offices, actually, it's really one of the uses that is kind of permitted there is the down, the retail downstairs and the offices upstairs. That's, if you remember the other, the C and M grocery, is that what it's called? He's always one...
M and M.
M and M. Do some, whatever, the offices are permitted up there. In any event, it is permitted. Again, the issue is parking. You can do a fee in lieu to address the parking issue. Well, I don't know if you heard earlier, obviously in the downtown, many properties don't have enough or any parking.
Correct.
So the board could kind of work with you on that. And there's a fee that we require to kind of go to the parking fund to, you know, for acquisition of parking lots or, or, you know...
Correct, so...
Maintenance of parking lots, et cetera, so...
Right, so we, happens to be, we have in the back around 15 spots. Maybe if I bring a good, you know, somebody that does these lines, maybe he can squeeze in a little bit more, see how, like, obviously still be within the code. There is some creativity that I want to bring to that regard. And the tenants that are currently in the retail, like the insurance or the attorney, they don't generate any traffic and they don't park in the back. They park like in the front or they, I think he walks sometimes even when it's nice weather. The idea was that I'll make, if I do 10 offices, I'll do one spot reserved per office, and then I'll have five extra for shared. And then for backup, there's always the, the spots on the front that during the day you're allowed to park there. And there's also the municipal parking that I understand that that's something that is very, very precious to the, to the town. But we did have conversations with the mayor, and he said that it's something that we will be able to work out, maybe to buy some permits, maybe, I don't know, directly there or a little bit further down. But he did tell me that that's something that can be worked on.
And the only, I'm sorry to jump in, the only other thing, if you, if and when you do it, in addition to going to building permit, is have like a good set of plans by, you know, an architect or an engineer?
Of course. Mark Garfinkel, I don't know if you ever heard of him, but he's the...
Who's that?
The one that sent the letter. Yeah, Chaim Garfinkel. He probably designed most of the new buildings in the last 20 years within Ramapo. He's very big and extremely professional. He was at the building, and obviously he's going to have a full set of engineering and architectural plans. This was just concept.
And address all of this, address the code issues, things like that?
Of course.
Okay.
Will you put the elevator in downstairs? The insurance company, are you rearranging the front door there?
Of course. So happens to be, that elevator was, I don't know, he put, I told him that we need an elevator in this building, and he was like, we were like almost by the deadline to give it in to you. So he just put it right there, but that's not where it's going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, happens to be also that I have a set of engineering plans with the elevator in place from a previous owner that once started a preliminary plan of putting in an elevator. And it's actually right after the staircase.